Very good, Mike.
It's been a couple months.
Good evening. Welcome to the public session. We do have about five speakers who'd like to address the group tonight. I will call you up by your first name, give us your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or under. First speaker is Frank Timson. Mr. Timson.
Good evening. I'm Frank Timson. I own and operate Ontario Taxi and I reside at 329 East 9th Street, Oswego, New York. For the last several years, I have been told that the city wants to clean up the cabs and all the drug and sex offenders. That's been told to me many, many times on numerous occasions by people from the top on down. Within the last week, there was a drug bust of a well-known drug dealer. During that drug bust, two cab drivers were there with drugs in their possession. From a cab company you've been trying to shut down. They have entered a plea deal to incriminate the dealer, but neither one of them has been charged or arrested, and both of them are still driving cabs. So which is it? Are you going to clean this up or not? I've been in contact with Mr. Michael Newber, the head man at the New York State Department of Transportation, and he has stated that after the last sting operation conducted in Oswego four years ago, capacity information was ordered placed on all buses so that law enforcement, that's university police, Oswego Police, New York State Police, Oswego County Sheriff's Department, U.S. Border Patrol, would have the authority to pull over, ticket, and hold over for DOT investigation any bus that overloads. Also, the city can request fees to operate in the city, just like the taxis. Because the state says their only jurisdiction is to make sure DOT rules and safety regulations are meant and enforced and complied with. So for years, the city has been bullcrapping us. The buses are not controlled by the state. Yet, you don't hesitate to triple my fees and charge me, and the buses and their drivers pay nothing. From the top official right down the chain, full of crap. Also, five illegal cabs running in the city for the past two years. License plate numbers and bin numbers, license plate numbers, color-making vehicle, were turned into the police and are now, all of a sudden, just became legal after several complaints to police and common counsel. These vehicles should have been impounded. Lake City Taxi intentionally breaks the law, running illegally with illegal cabs and drivers, and forges taxi cab license plate request forms with Barbara Sugar's signature and city seal on them to obtain taxi cab plates. And let us not forget about the other 22 cabs and buses operating in the city but are not registered. All these illegal business practices must stop. I've retained an attorney, and it's not Stephen Green, and letters are being composed and forwarded to the State Department Attorney General's office requesting them to investigate your affairs. And Ms. Gay Williams isn't present, but in case she didn't know, for the past seven years, what I've been talking about, it's the issues of taxi cabs, illegal taxi cabs, illegal cab companies, illegal drivers, illegal buses overloading, 100 or more students to a bus jeopardizing their lives and safety. That's why I've been coming here for the past seven years. Maybe you should call the county attorney and inform them that you are daydreaming at the meeting and don't remember. This is not going to go away. You may control or censor your illegal activities or cover-ups with yesterday's news tomorrow, AKA the Pal Times, and other news and TV media. I've seen one or two stories on the news channels and newspaper that city officials state that all illegal activity shall stop. Well, I guess that was all talk for the media. And the matter was turned over and referred to Gay Williams' cover-up department. An investigation is coming. You've lied and betrayed the honest businessman. You've had authority to police buses and did nothing but lie. Is there anybody here, anyone, that's going to be a man and stand up before me and tell me something is going to be really done, for real? Not just bullcrap. Anyone at all?
The city needs an anima. Thank you, Mr. Timson. The next speaker is Mr. John Hanson.
Good evening. My name is John Hanson. I reside in Fulton, 474 West 1st Street South. I have a set of papers I'd like to hand out to each one of the councilmen and the mayor, or somebody can hand them out, I don't care, either way. [Inaudible]
Please, sir.
Well, two times in a sudden, I took the master plumber exam here in Oswego. And the license master plumber in Onondah County, and Onondah County takes 10 years to become a license master plumber, it has to be passed on your test on time. I did what one of 535 guys will do, I passed the master's exam in Onondah County the first time out. I also hold a master's exam, I also hold a master's license in the city of Fulton. I live in Fulton. A lot of my advertising affects Oswego. I get phone calls all the time from people in Oswego, and I can't do their work for them. In 2007, when I took the test, I took the test with a friend of mine. After the test was over with, I felt that the test was kind of shaded, so I told him I was going to come before the council then. He said he would prefer not to rock the boat. So I went ahead, came before the council, the plumbing board got an earful, I guess, and when him and I went and took the test again, surprise, he passed the test, I did not. I gave up on it. I should have listened to what everybody else in, that's a licensed master plumber anywhere in the area knows. Don't waste your time. The test is offered once a year here. If they give you five different tests with totally different things on them, you'll never stand a chance of passing it, you're wasting your time and your money. That being said, after I met with the council, I thought, as other people have apparently, that, you know, something was going to be done. Well, back then, there was three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 master plumbers. The present list, because I was called by somebody to do the harbor freight, and I can't do it because I'm not licensed here and that falls within the city limits, now holds five master plumbers, is what you have in the city of Oswego. Five. Now, I find it so hard to believe that with all the genius plumbers in the area, nobody can pass that test since 2007. Nobody. I don't know how many people have taken it, I didn't get a chance to get that information. But still, zero have taken and passed that test since 2007. Now, if you're a business, my associate called me up from the company that I do these places for and said, "They have five master plumbers there, who do you recommend?" I said, "I don't know, I don't know what to tell you." Call them. He says, "We have, they're all busy, they're talking months down the line." Businesses aren't going to come to your area if they have to look at waiting months down the line and then pay a huge amount of money because everybody's got it wrapped up in the union. The only guys on this test that were on the list the last time out were either guys that had their licenses granted to them because they did an exchange at one time from Fulton to Oswego, five licenses for five licenses. Were either that or union guys, that come up through the union. Those were the only guys that held licenses in this town, until Craig Rapone took the test with me and passed when I failed because I rocked the boat, and then they could say, "See, look, somebody passed." Other than somebody from Oswego. It's just awfully strange that the only people that can pass this test are the people from Oswego. And one guy that passed it on other situations. I was given this letter, it showed up to me not too long ago, and I've been holding onto it. I won't read the whole thing, but it tells about all kinds of places that have had plumbing done on them illegally, without licenses. I don't know who the gentleman is that wrote it. From the information in there, it probably wouldn't be too awful hard to find out. I'm assuming, and it says that he sent it to the previous, to the mayor, plumbing associates, whatever. All these people that received this letter took an oath. The minute this hit their desk, there should have been an investigation. Were all these jobs done? Were they done without plumbing permits? If they were, who knew and who let it happen? You're talking thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of permits that were negated by the people on this list that this got to. And if these jobs were done without permits, why are you, by contractors, just simple contractors that think that they know plumbing, why at that time would you penalize somebody that's a licensed plumber from coming in here and doing work when you'll let this go on and take nothing of it? And if it's done right, it's done right, if it's done wrong, oh, well, who knows? Nobody's going to get blamed for it, nobody's going to get in trouble. You took an oath. If your plumbing inspector wasn't doing his job, it's called dereliction of duty. The taxpayers in this town could sue him for dereliction of duty. He gets paid money to do a job. If he's not doing the job, get him out of there. I don't know where to tell you people to go or what to do. You're the council, you're the mayor, you're going to do what you want anyways. But when only five people left in this area hold a plumbing license, I think something stinks pretty bad. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And I will meet with the plumbing inspector tomorrow.
Well, him, you've got all the plumbers on this list that are, you know, sit on the board, you know, obviously they're protecting their own, they're protecting their income, you know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mercedes Neese.
Mercedes Neese, 128 Erie Street, 5th Ward. I appreciated being able to speak at the committee meetings last week, so thank you very much for that opportunity. I'm here with the Save Oswego's Historic Sites group, and I wanted to officially present the petitions that I mentioned at the council committee meetings, which are another 521 signatures totaling 1,168 signatures in support of a restoration of the building as opposed to demolition of the building. So if I could present that? We understand there's going to be a big decision made tonight, and we do hope that you have the future of the community in mind and think about the fact that that building, once gone, can never be replaced. So we do have a lot of vacant properties, so if somebody really wants to develop a vacant piece of land, I think they could probably be accommodated. So thank you very much for your time and wishing you the best this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Neese. The next speaker is George Koenig.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm George Koenig. I live at 51 Bronson Street in the 1st Ward, but I'm here tonight again to represent the Heritage Foundation of Oswego County and our group called Save Oswego's Historic Sites. What I want to talk about is that's some concerns we have about Mr. Broadwell's offer to develop the Cahill Building that appeared in today's paper. We question why Mr. Broadwell wants to hire his engineers to examine the building when the building has recently already been found basically structurally sound and restorable by Woodruff Brothers engineers engaged by the Community Development Office. Then, while we applaud Mr. Broadwell's development work in Oswego in the past, we're aware that he has acquired other properties in the city which he sought to develop but which are still waiting for development today. We are concerned, what if the Cahill property is similarly left undeveloped if he is chosen as the developer? We wish to stress once again that any developer of the Cahill property must be committed to preserving and restoring this historic gem. Mr. Tony Paul Dean has suggested how this can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. The next speaker is John Gibson. Mr. Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor. John Gibson, 281 County Route 20, Oswego, New York. I own a taxi company, New York Transportation. A couple things, I mean, I just, you know, I've been in contact with your secretary through emails. Something's got to give. I mean, we paid these fees, you've got Lake City outrunning, you've got Lightning outrunning. I mean, Lake City right now, I've done some undercover work. They've got seven taxis out. There's no way that these drivers are even legit. It takes a month to get a background check done to go to the port. I've already checked with Gina down at the city clerk's office, he's licensed for two taxis. Why aren't the cops doing anything with these guys? Well, you have to route ticketing these, you know, other taxi companies. I mean, I haven't been running in two weeks since I had a heart attack, so I shouldn't even be here tonight, but I made the effort to come. I'll be back to work on Thursday, but from my understanding, the city police are now telling us how we have to run our cabs. I mean, we can't double fare, they're going to give us a ticket. You know, we pay the city the fees and the rights. If Lake City can get away with it, why can't we? I mean, bottom line. I don't know who it was a couple weeks back that told me I didn't have the money to sue the city. I've got more than enough money. I will sue the city of Oswego. I don't care which councilman's ran their mouth and talking out on the street, but I'm here to voice my opinion. I mean, I've got a good lawyer out of New York City that's the one to take this case on, do investigative work along with the state attorney general. I mean, if I have to get U.S. Marshal Service involved, I mean, that'd be the next step. It's the last step I want to take, but if I have to, I will. Unless we can either shut Lake City down, they have more than enough options to shut them down with the forgery. I mean, I checked into DMV and I was told that he brought these forms in. I just want to know how he's able to get away with all this stuff, and we're not. I mean, you've got myself legit, you've got Ontario legit, you've got Lone Wolf who's legit, you've got Sonny's Taxi out there that, as far as I know, complies by all city rules and regulations, and he was the one that was wrote a ticket by one of the city cops, you know, for double fare and had to refund the money. I mean, the city police can't tell us how to run a taxi business, because I would love for them to ticket my cab company when I'm back out double fared, because it would be a losing battle with them. I mean, I've been in contact with Captain Dave Lazzat, I've been in contact with Chuck Searer, nothing seems to be getting done. So it seems to me like Lake City's got some type of a cover-up going up with the city police department. I mean, numerous attempts, were they over to the Scott Miano's house? I mean, I've seen that point-blank. I mean, that kid used to take my taxi, threw him out, he's a dopehead. I don't want dopeheads in my taxi company, I don't want sex offenders in my cabs. I mean, I just really wish somebody would do something with the, you know, with the illegal cabs going on in the city and everything else. Just because I've been out, I've seen it all, and I've got everything recorded on camera. So I mean, if somebody can really move up to home plate and step up to it, if not, I think we should be refunding our money. I mean, 300 bucks a year compared to what Fulton pays at 35, that's killing us. On top of $5,000 for insurance, and now they're going to up the insurance rates. So I mean, we could be looking in excess of eight to 10 grand for just one vehicle. We can't afford that unless the city's going to tell us that we have to, we can't double fare. Can't pick up two people and take to a different location. So I mean, I really wish somebody would revise these taxi laws, drop the license fees down, and, you know, a-shut Lake City Taxi down because we all know what they're doing in it. Or I'll have to conduct my own little sting and have it looked up, higher up by a state attorney general if I have to. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, John. By the way, John, I did try calling you a couple times last week. I didn't know about your heart attack. I'm sorry to hear that.
No, I've been in the hospital, I had to have stents put in today, and, I mean, I just wanted to come up. I mean, I'm more irritated, I mean, I've got people telling me that, you know, they charge them seven, eight bucks. Every time they get in their cabs, they smell like marijuana, they say they call the police department, nothing gets done, so.
I have a meeting with Chief DeCarr tomorrow. I'll give you a call, John.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody else who has any comments they'd like to make? Seeing none, I will adjourn the public session, and we will begin the regular meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, clerk, please call the roll.
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
He is excused.
We have six present and one excused.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, I do have a couple of proclamations I would like to read, and if we have someone who can take a photograph with, it would be appreciated. The first one is Suicide Prevention Awareness Day, which is September the 19th. The proclamation is, whereas nationally suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, annually more than 38,000 lives are lost, and it is estimated that for every suicide, there are eight to 25 attempted suicides. And whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death among the people from the age of 15 to 24 in the United States, and the 10th-leading cause of all deaths in the United States, and whereas public awareness of this terrifying problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, and as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide, are those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a national priority by the president and Congress, now therefore I, Thomas W. Gillan, mayor of the city of Oswego, New York, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September the 19th, 2015, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Day in Oswego, New York, and do urge all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. Would you like to come up and I'll present the proclamation to you? And I know there's going to be a walk, I believe, at the college. See's working a little better. Good to see you again. Good to see you. Wow, here we go. Nice to see you. Who's the little one? Oh. She's very shy. She's in the city, she's always welcome here, okay? Good to see you again. Okay, let's... Dayton, right? Yeah? I'll never forget. Got everybody, guys? I'll be there. What time you want me there? 1:00. I'll be there. See you, guys. Yep, we'll see ya. And there is an event at the college on Saturday, 11 o'clock. There'll be a walk and a celebration, so looking forward to that. I have another proclamation. This is for September the 17th. This is Blessings in a Black... Back Pla... Black... Backpack Day. Let me try that again. Whereas nearly 70% of public school students nationally qualify for the federal free and reduced-price schools meals program, totaling nearly 31 million students, and whereas this program feeds students only Monday through Friday, meaning that many of these students are hungry on the weekends, and whereas hunger has both short and long-term negative effects on children's health, weakening immune systems, increasing hospitalization rates, and impairing neural development, and whereas there are strong ties between nutrition and academic achievement, therefore ensuring that no child goes hungry is especially critical during the school year, and whereas Blessings in a Backpack, a 501(c)(3) organization provides food for elementary school children across America who otherwise have little or no food to eat on weekends during the school year, and whereas Blessings in a Backpack currently serves more than 72,000 students in 44 states across the country, and whereas these Blessings in a Backpack programs are administered by volunteers in communities across the United States who fundraise, purchase food, stuff and deliver backpacks to students once a week, and whereas the United States Conference of Mayors has adopted Thursday, September the 17th, 2015, as Blessings in a Backpack Day, whereby mayors across the United States will participate in backpack stuffing events, providing food for children in their communities who need it most. Now therefore I, Thomas W. Gillan, mayor of the city of Oswego, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2015, as Blessings in a Backpack Day in Oswego, New York. And I will be there Thursday to help pack some of those backpacks. So I'm going to call up Melissa if you'd like to, we'll take a picture, and if you'd like to say a few words about the event. Chris Hyatt. Nice to meet you. First of all, I want to thank everybody, whether they're organizers, sponsors, or participants in the Dragon Boat event. Weather wasn't kind, but the people were, and it was a wonderful day, and it goes to show that it's a community that's really pulling itself together, and I want to thank everybody for making this a great community tradition, and we've been doing this for four years now, and one of these days is going to be a nice day when we have it, so I'm counting on that. Also, the last issue is, we do have an event, it's been going on actually since the month of June through to September. We have a local artist, Don Gillespie, who has been doing a full-scale nine-foot reproduction of the Charles H. Grant 19th-century oil painting, The Mercy of Neptune. And there is an event at the Maritime Museum that will be on display. You can see this, it's running through the month of September, and I wanted to make sure that people were aware of this, the impact that the maritime history is in our community. Some of these paintings are pretty dramatic, and I think it might be a great opportunity for you to experience some of the history of Oswego. So I wanted to mention that, and I believe that's all I have. Do the councilors have anything on there? Seeing none, we'll go right to the resolutions. Will the clerk please call resolution?
Resolution 395 would approve the minutes of the common council meeting held August 24th, 2015.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 396.
Resolution 396 would approve the minutes of the special common council meeting held August 31st, 2015.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 397.
Resolution 397 would appoint Morgan Longley, Commissioner of Deeds.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Todd. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 398.
Resolution 398 would approve the use of public space at the request of Joyce Christopher Foley, owner of property located at 132 through 134 East 4th Street, in order to install a temporary wheelchair ramp.
Counselor Walker. Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 399.
Resolution 399 would approve the use of public space at the request of Joseph Todaro, owner of property located at 88 Liberty Street, in order to install a temporary wheelchair ramp.
Counselor Todd and Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 400.
Resolution 400 would approve the use of public space at the request of Journey of Faith United Methodist Church, in order to host the 29th Annual Crop Walk to be held on Sunday, September 27th, 2015.
Counselor Walker and Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 401.
Resolution 401 would approve the use of public space at the request of Trinity Catholic School in order to place advertising signs.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 402.
Resolution 402 would approve the use of public space at the request of the Oswego High School Band Parents Association in order to place advertising signs.
Counselor Barlow and Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 403.
Resolution 403 would approve the use of public space at the request of Brookfield Power in order to place an informational kiosk.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Counselor Todd.
Commissioner. Commissioner Smith, were you able to find out if that was going to, where they're locating it and their plan? Is that going to disrupt or flailing at all?
We haven't had any discussion about that. I'm not concerned about finding the location.
You don't think it'll disrupt you in the meantime?
Oh, I think it will.
Thank you. Any comments?
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 404.
Resolution 404 would approve the use of Moncom Park for a fundraiser event to be held on Saturday, September 19th, 2015.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Todd. Any discussion? Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the friends of Moncom Park who've organized this fundraiser. They've recently organized a paint the fence event where we had over 20 neighbors in there that were power washing the fence and wire brushing it. And then, we had, they bought the paint and completely painted the fence. So, these neighbors, every year, are putting something into the park. And I know some of the councillors may have gone by and taken a look at it, but it's really looking nice. And this event will help for flowers. They plant flowers in the spring. And some more improvements, they're going to be placing the slats on the wooden benches. So, this is something that, you know, I am very proud of, and I'd like to see and hope to see other people adopt the park and do similar events.
I agree. Moncom Park has come a long way in the last few years. Any other comments?
Counselor Bartle. Along the same lines of Counselor Enright, I think Moncom Park is a hidden gem in the city of Oswego. My favorite park, one of my favorite places in the city. And also, Counselor Enright forgot to thank himself, but I think Counselor Enright and all those involved in helping restore the park. So, thank you.
Good point, Counselor. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 405.
Resolution 405 would approve the use of Barret Pack Park for the Second Annual Light Up the Night Event to be held Friday, October 2nd, 2015.
Counselor Enright. And Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 406.
Resolution 406 would approve the use of Washington Square East Park for the National Public Rosary Crusade to be held Saturday, October 10th, 2015.
Counselor Walker. Counselor McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 407.
Resolution 407 would authorize the mayor to sign Change Order Number Two with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for project modifications to the milling and paving project.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 407A.
Resolution 407A would waive the rules of the common council to present resolutions number 407B and 407C from the floor without committee consideration.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Walker. Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 407B.
Resolution 407B would authorize the mayor to loan the Charles H. Grant painting to the Oswego Art Association for a three-day show beginning September 25th, 2015.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 601.
Please call resolution 407C.
Resolution 407C would approve the use of public space at the request of the Oswego Opera Theater in order to place advertising signs.
Counselor Walker. Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.